This time we'll call the Tuesday, July twenty 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 one, reading of the Jackson County. Order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Stein, this and myself, Jack Lee are your county supervisors. We have Lisa Smith, our county auditor. And Bjorn Beck, her assistant today. And Luann Goki, our administrative assistants, the first item on our agenda is David Dryer, Jackson County engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pretty much short agenda, our first item is an entrance permit for Mr. Matthew Tracy. He's looking for a driveway on section three, three, thirtieth avenue. It's a class D. Class D field entrance on the west side of the road. That is in Brandon Township.
Need to say this.
Yes, that's.
I would move to approve. We have a motion in a second. Permit, field entrance permit for Matthew Tracy. All those in favor.
Second item is to approve the agreement with City of Miles for the Rural County Transportation Program, RCTP. Program, City Miles is looking to do some drainage improvements for Adams Avenue. It has a low spot and a problem with icing and roadway failure. It worked with us to adjust and design it, so we recommend approval of the grant money.
And he had went down there.
Yes, yes, and I met with Deborah. Yeah, the town clerk and I worked with the. Matts who was doing the design and their contractor, they upgraded the storm pipe so that it will be a little easier to. To maintain and keep clean. Twenty-fourth.
So is it seventy-two?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
I would second that motion. Motion in a second to approve the RTBC funding for the City of Miles. If we do the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. I motion carry.
And then final item is to authorize us to offer. What a greater one position to candidate A, we interviewed twenty-two. We had twenty-two applicants, we interviewed four people. The number of applicants is down from previous years in the past, we need to get thirty to forty applicants. You see twenty-two. Advocate A has good qualifications and. Roger and I both agreed and would recommend offering it to candidate A. See if he accepts and then bring back for approval of the board next week.
Okay, so you need action to approve making him an offer.
Yes.
I will state that motion. Second. We have a motion in a second to offer position to candidate A. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I motion carry.
The only other thing I had to add is a work session for discussion about additional public works projects. In this fiscal year, we have additional revenue that we would like, that we have the ability to fund some additional projects. Just schedule that for next week or how that's done.
Why don't we do that after our board meeting next, next Tuesday?
Okay.
Will that work, will it?
I think it will.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you.
We say.
Well, we're a little early for citizens and visitors, so. You want to do your thing, Lisa?
Kristen's on the county chamber, if you'd like to.
I'm here, I'm just having some technical issues, sorry, but I am here.
But you, okay, we'll, it's okay with you, Kristen, we'll go ahead and get started.
Okay.
David, higher is also here and assuming that's what he's here for, so. We'll proceed. Good morning.
David, you know, Cameron.
I'm here as a backup, but.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll let you get started.
Okay, is it, did you say me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Kristen Glass with the Quad Cities Chamber, I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at the Quad Cities Chamber. Weeks ago, a member, actually someone from the state of Illinois came to us with a. Opportunity that they encouraged us to apply for, it is the SBA Community Navigator Grant. There are three different tiers to this grant and I'll get into a little more detail, but the goal of this grant is to. Provide outreach to underserved rural and. Businesses that are minority owned, as an example, just do further outreach and connect businesses to technical assistance to help businesses grow. The, there's three different tiers, there's significant funding opportunities, so as a Quad Cities Chamber looked at this. We looked at how can we get to tier two, which is a population of five hundred thousand people or more. If we could get to that here, it's a two and a half million dollar funding opportunity for our region. So in doing so, we looked at an eight county region. That would allow us to do outreach to thousands of businesses and provide technical assistance by connecting businesses to resources like. The SBDCs, SCORE, financial assistance opportunities, et cetera. So in doing so, we talked to all different eight counties about and organizations within those counties. And the Quad Cities Chamber would serve as the hub and being the hub, we would. Be the primary reporting agency, we would manage all the funding and kind of oversee this grant. And then we have a proposed nineteen different spokes, so this is a hub and spoke model. Where the spokes are doing outreach to businesses within their territory or the area they serve. And we are doing, using one central system to report and find common themes. And the spokes will meet with us monthly. So under this model, we are able to provide a pretty significant funding to different organizations in the, the eight county region. Each organization that signs on to be a spoke will receive a hundred thousand dollars if this grant is awarded. And that hundred thousand dollars can be used to add capacity to do outreach, it could help supplement existing work. But the goal is to be able to do further outreach than what we've been able to do in the past. This grant is due Friday and we are in the final stages of collecting. Three items from each of the spokes and it's a letter of support. Their, their budget summary and their budget. And then we're also getting resolutions passed at county levels. To be able to include this in our grant application. It is a pretty quick turnaround, we submit on Friday and work will start for those that receive the award on September fifteenth. And so it is a pretty quick timeline and it is a two-year grant. So what you have in your agenda today is a draft resolution that I'd asked for your consideration in passing for support.
So this is a draft resolution, this is, is the resolution?
Sorry, it is the resolution.
Okay, and I, did you say eighteen spokes?
We have nineteen spokes.
So do we have the nineteen spokes in place that that is required?
Correct, yes.
And are, are like cities included, county, Cogota, Bellevue?
Jackson, the Jackson County Economic Alliance is submitting. So Nick and I have been working quite a bit back and forth on that.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Nick.
Yeah.
Actually, our county attorney. I had some concerns with the verbiage in the, are we, are we targeting? Women, veterans, socially, economic, disadvantaged individuals, are we targeting that?
Yes, we, so if we are awarded, we will put together a target list of businesses throughout the eight counties. And Jackson County would have a specific list.
This is that standard language in something like that, Dave, you can tell me, I'm just thinking of almost a reverse discrimination type thing.
That's the actual grant, SBA is seeking organizations to do. Outreach with emphasis on those areas, that does not mean we can't do outreach to other businesses and we certainly plan to.
Okay, yeah, right, so, so even though we might be targeting people who might not otherwise. You know, we might be going to them as opposed to expecting them to come to us. But that doesn't limit us to that group.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's kind of where I was headed. I mean, I don't want somebody left out that needs it, of course, and I think that sounds like a great program.
Yeah, we will, I, we will just demonstrate that we, we are, that is a part of our grant. But we certainly, there's, there's many businesses that have been impacted by COVID or we've never. Maybe we haven't talked to them in five years and so it'll, it won't just be. The minority owned, veterans owned rural businesses.
So, so we've been doing some of these things and in fact. The board packet that our board's games night, there's a, a letter. From the state saying what a great job we've been doing in our county as far as reaching out to businesses. Particularly in the last year, but, but this, I think, with some additional funding would just further enhance what we can do and especially. You know, because we were training Stephanie to help with some of these things. She's now working for the Quad City. Economic Development Chamber, but, but this will help on, I think, bring somebody, yeah, this is a payback. In inviting us to be one of the spokes here to help with some additional training with that person, but also to help them. Do more as we move forward here, so.
And there's no match or no co-division that is required from our end?
No, there is zero match that is required. It is. Just straight funding to do this outreach and we are. Working with the SBDCs and SCORE and any other type of technical assistance organizations that fall within, within those eight counties. To make sure we have a strong relationship in place to make referrals.
Any negatives to this program that you see or could come pop up that I've not seen?
And the only, the only, whenever you have, and I have experience with federal grants, there's always reporting requirements, so. The only. And we'll manage that from the hub to make sure that all of the spokes are clear on reporting, but we will have to do quarterly reports. And so there'll be reporting requirements, but other than that, I only see this as an upside as far as furthering collaboration. Between these nineteen different partners. It's, it's a great opportunity in my opinion.
To me, it just seems like a win-win.
Sounds like a lot of partners, but on, if you, if I heard correctly, you said each spoke with what we call it. Or entity will get a hundred thousand?
Correct.
And who makes the decision of where that is distributed to?
The entity itself has each have submitted a budget, budget summary and letter. So they make the decision on how they would use those funds to do outreach. So we have no, the Quad Cities Chamber has no. Interest in controlling the use of those funds, that's part of our application, we would be judged and rated based on. How the nineteen spokes plan to do this. The Quad Cities Chamber would, Chamber will use the remaining, let's say, six hundred thousand, we'll hire a grant manager. Someone with experience in managing federal grants. And then we will hire a outreach coordinator that will work directly with the nineteen spokes on training and. Questions and access to technical assistance, et cetera. And then we will use some of the funding to set up that system to enter all the data into.
Okay, any other questions? I guess you still, the hundred thousand, is it coming to Economic Alliance?
Right, it would be a partnership between, a contract between the chamber, the Quad Cities Chamber and our office, right?
And it would be up to a hundred thousand, up to, yeah.
And as far as, and then you're making the decisions of where that distributing to or that's?
Nick and I have had some conversations, obviously, we didn't. Put together that budget yet because we want to make sure everybody's on board, but yes, but before the deadline, we will put a budget together. Basically, it's going to be staffing, and again, some of this can be in that whole replacement as we take a look at. What are we doing as we project for our future? And who are we bringing on and what will that person's role be in more of that time? Obviously, if this is a. If this grant's approved, more of that time will be spent working directly with businesses as opposed to doing office types of stuff.
So would some of the businesses be actually getting cash? For their businesses, you know?
They'll be getting, you know, assistance and guidance and we can direct them to places where they might need some help, but. No, they're not getting cash.
This. Sort of loan program or funding program.
Similar to like what Mr. Abbott was doing over here or something in that effect is helping businesses in the tech side of it.
And hopefully, yeah, I mean, it's, we're just in the infancy stages there too, but yes. Right. We see it as fitting really nicely with what we're already doing, just give us the ability to do more, so.
I don't have anything else.
I would make a motion to. Support a resolution supporting endorsing the Quad City Chamber application. For the full business administration. Program, other program.
I will second. We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. For the Quad City application to the US Small Business Administration for the Community Navigator Pilot Program. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I motion to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've got. Nine fifteen, are there any citizens or? Visitors that would wish to address the board? Seeing none? Lisa?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I need a motion to approve minutes of the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So, second. My motion in a second to approve the publications as minutes as the July fifteenth meeting of. All those in favor? Right, I motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of six hundred ninety-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
I would move to approve. Second. Motion in a second, I would note that three hundred fifty thousand of that is from the revolving loan fund which we approved last week. Still a lot of money that. Is above and beyond the three hundred and fifty, but. All those in favor?
I, I.
Post motion carry.
That's all that I have for the project.
Okay. Luann, are you available to come up?
In minutes.
We'll recess till they get some paperwork done. And we'll recon. And we're joined by Luann Goki, our administrative assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Start with the calendar. Six o'clock this evening is Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting for Jack, either by Zoom or in Bellevue. Wednesday, July twenty-first at four P M is an ECIA Executive Council and ECDC meetings. Interview also for Jack. Thursday, July twenty-second at ten A M. Is a community services, community solutions, at least in Iowa, meeting interview also for Jack and that. Does start early, really unusual. From two to four on Thursday is the workforce or proposals for the rescue plan funds. By Zoom for Jack. And that's expected to be a two-hour meeting. On Saturday at two P M is the groundbreaking for the solar power system at the Hurstville Interpretive Center. And you're all invited to that. Monday, July twenty-sixth from four to six P M, I think she hasn't confirmed that's when they're going to go to where the Camp Courageous site. For the watershed management authority and Larry is. Expected to, anticipated to attend that meeting, so.
They have a, a large area that they're thinking about making into a wetland. For water retention stuff and be part of the park and. Do some decks and explanations of what's going on.
That's where that camp crew is. Is that, that's the land they talked about that they were gifted?
I don't remember how many acres, I want to say twenty, but not sure. It was a nice size there.
It's, sounds like a great. Great addition to the camp.
Okay, also on Monday at five o'clock is a Mississippi Valley Area Workforce Executive Board meeting by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July twenty-seventh at nine A M. And that evening at six o'clock will be the Jackson County Fair Parade. And keep up for the fair, of course, so. This is today, I am looking for approval of a fireworks permit for Brenda Rose. At fourteen, two twenty-two, thirtieth avenue in Monmouth for July the twenty-fourth.
Motion to approve. I would second. Motion in a second to approve the fireworks permit for Brenda Rose, all those in favor? I motion carry.
I'm also looking for a motion on. Reappointing Larry to the Jackson County Conservation Board for a new five-year term that would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
I would second, all those in favor, I, I motion carry.
No objections for leaving the table, so I guess it's all right here too. I'm also looking for a motion to reappoint Monica McHugh as the supervisor's representative. On the compensation board for a new four-year term expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
So moved, second. Motion in a second. All those in favor? I, I motion carry.
That's all I have for you today.
Okay. Do you want to call in and see if she could come over early? Be hard to get a hold of Bruce and, and Mike for their presentation, but. I guess at this point we'll recess, Griffin and. We're being joined by Mike Griffin and Bruce Fisher to talk about the Jackson County Economic or Energy District.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, you have.
You guys have the.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, there's a little bit of an update here that we can just share verbally.
First off, I'd like to thank you guys for appointing me to the conservation board.
We always make mistakes once. I can't be helped.
Anyhow, you know, this is kind of an update and then an ask on the end, but. We're the Jackson County Energy District, we've been in there this, this December, it'll be about two years since we had in there. In our whole, goal there, you can read it off of there, we're a local nonprofit organization created to lead, implement and accelerate the locally owned clean energy transition. By enabling access to locally owned clean energy. And that means we get to keep the money here in the county. And that, you guys have done all those economic studies where how much a dollar generates in here? If we can keep that money here instead of sending it to Oklahoma, Northern Iowa, Atlanta, which serves a lot of the towns in the, in the country. They're based out of Illinois and that's where I stopped it. So anyhow, we're trying to develop, Bruce is the chairman here and he's going to go through our current growth solar project.
Thanks, Mike, thanks for having us, we appreciate that. Just to tie in with, with what Mike said, really, we're, we're. We see ourselves as primarily an economic development engine for the county, we're trying to retain energy dollars here. See that those dollars are reinvested in our communities. And at the same time, we're trying to do some good work for, for the environment. We have a, a program that we launched, gosh, I guess it was just about June first, Grow Solar. You all agreed to, we support this in principle and we really are grateful for that, we've been running it now for a couple of months. At this point, we have done one contract, but we have thirteen proposals that are outstanding as well as two more requests for proposals. The program will continue to run through the end of August, in fact, we'll do a, a late announcement that will extend it in the first part of September to see if we're getting. Buddy grab at the end, but we're, we're pretty excited right now that the collection of, of these proposals, that they were all come through and they're not all come through, but. But we're looking at about a hundred and fifty kilowatts, which would have us achieve the second threshold for cost discounting. Cost discounts start at fifty kilowatts, which essentially we've already received, achieved because of the Hurstville Interpretive Center counts towards our goal. The next one's a hundred and fifty, which will decline at another three cents a lot, so. We're looking to enable our citizens here, our businesses and our farmers with some discounts and, and support them along their journey of becoming educated on solar. Return on investment, they can be accompanied with that and, and you know, some other aspects of. Environment that we think are worth knowing. So we've, we've got a good run going, we've still got a month and a half left. And right now, we're going to really start our more intensive push and what we've discovered in, through MRVA, which is our partner in this business.
Northwest Renewable Energy Association.
They, they say that everybody signs up at the end, that they want to wait till the end and, and, and I don't know why, because the summer's, the sun's burning, but that's the way it's working. So right now, what we're trying to do is to up our advertising game and you're going to hear more about us on the radio, we're going to do some more print material. We're going to be out at the groundbreaking at Hurstville Saturday and a few other programs that we're going to be launching as well. We're very excited to be moving off from, or in addition to Zooms to submit person face-to-face meetings. We've had some challenges with people being able to access that technology and I think we're going to hopefully get a, a new market and we're talking about face-to-face connections, so. That's, that's something we're looking forward to, we're going to run our first face-to-face session August ninth, that week. The ask for you today was to gain your permission to post some of our signs around our county properties. This is the example, the signs, the yard signs, it's not just a little wire hangers kind of.
Just gives us more.
More visibility.
Right.
We were thinking maybe at the secondary road shops, people stopping by for recycling or just driving by it. Maybe even at the courthouse or some other buildings with your permission, maybe some county right of ways. We didn't want to just go post in the bully building without getting permission, so that's, that's basically what we're here for, for our first ask.
How many signs do you have?
We have nineteen left, we posted a few in yards and we've gotten up by Walmart, a few places here and there, we have nineteen left.
We can do that, right? Undercoming own property?
I think we can, I mean, we're not trying to sell any, incorrect.
No, it's an educational program. And you guys are down as one of the partners.
Yeah, I would say that. So am I correct in your saying you can bundle these proposals to meet the threshold for the discount?
That's the way it works, actually, it's not that we can, that's, that's the way it is done. So the way, to get a little more specific in the details. So we start out from zero and at fifty kilowatts, collection of, of contracts that meet that. We go from two dollars and twelve cents to dollars and nine cents per watt on an installation. We're contending then, of course, to get more, more signups, those just add to the pot and we get to a hundred and fifty, that goes down to two dollars and six cents a watt. Now, the people that signed up first, you know, they're thinking they're getting two dollars and nine cents maybe, well, they get a rebate when that next run comes in, they get up to. You know, a hundred and fifty kilowatts, so people that get in early, they still get the, the deal that the people that get in at the end do. It's just that they get a rebate as opposed to having it, you know, in the contract that they're signing, because they're going to sign one for two dollars and nine cents. But the fine princess, you know, when you get to, when the, the program gets to a hundred and fifty kilowatts, then you're going to get this discount and a rebate, so. Everybody gets the same price, no matter if they get in early or get in late. The only exceptions to that would be big installations, like Hurstville got a better deal because it has its own economy scale.
So, well, with that being said, how many kilowatts is that, is that how we're measuring that?
Yes, Hurstville's forty-six point something kilowatts. And as I suggested, when we get to fifty kilowatts, we have that first discount take place where we can get a three cent per kilowatt, or per kilowatt discount. And as I suggested, when we get to fifty kilowatts, we have that first discount take place, where we can get a three cent per kilowatt, or per kilowatt discount.
So I I'm just remembering from claims, electric bill out there is six hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Is this going to get that, or?
Oh, they're going to have no electric bills anymore. Yeah, on an annual basis net meter, uh, they're they're expecting to generate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars savings. Uh, over the uh life of the warrant, the warranty life of the system, which is twenty-five years.
Well, I know ECIA put in solar up at their office in Dubuque, and their their bill is almost non-existent.
Yeah.
Exactly. I live in my house, and my electric bill, and I'm with Alliant, which depends on what company you're with.
Hurstville's also with the line.
Yeah, but they give me credit for everything that I overproduce or whatever goes into a bank and I can use it later, so I'm actually getting. For ways, yeah, I'm getting full price for it or whatever, but my electric bill since April has been eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents, and that's the meter charge from Alliant.
Well, I've had several individuals that have approached me about our new jail. If we were considering solar uh energy for the new jail, and I said, I know in the past we did discuss that. Um, but I said, you know, no decision has been made as far as I know, or um. We haven't really looked at a cost analysis for that either.
We should check with like Delaware, they just built a new jail, almost similarly to what we're doing, what kind of costs they're running on it, just so we get an idea.
Mm-hmm, well, that's kind of a segue into our next deal.
I am, I that's almost like, perfect, Jack, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, but before we do, what about any other questions about the gross solar program? Because we're going to talk now about the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities, which does directly impact potentially county operations.
I think we're ready to move there.
Okay, so um IISC is, you're probably somewhat familiar with it, that's been kind of captured through the uh JCEA. And they've basically marshaled the University of Iowa. To provide Jackson County with a team of advanced graduate students who are working on a capstone project. Uh, as well as faculty supervisors to come into our county, they're going to actually visit here in August, get to know the place. Um, and there are a series of projects that are going on throughout the county, but ours, um, we were privileged to understand is kind of the uh, the landmark or flagship project. And it's essentially geared to do this, we want to enable county officials, government officials. To have a good insight into what is the value of solar, how much is it going to cost? Where could we apply it, where does it make sense, where doesn't it make sense, what's the return on investment we've got? What are the ownership options that might uh either allow us to have a no cost or a low cost purchase? Versus us funding it through a bond or whatever methodology you want to use. But what we're excited about is the university is going to provide Jackson County with a clean energy plan. Which will take a look at every county facility, take a look at how much energy they use. What would the investment in solar, uh, what level of investment in solar will be required for each of those facilities? We're talking not just about the big ones like the jail or maybe the courthouse, but the secondary road shops as well, I'm guessing each of those has a meter. Now, that's that's an incredible wasteful, uh, I think, investment that you're making or expense you're making, I should say. So there's options that we could look at, uh, what I like about this is that you're not having. A consultant or a contractor selling you on this. We've got a university that has an objective kind of science-based approach. Um, and they really, I mean, I'm I'm assuming, I'm hoping they're they're excited for our opportunity. But they're they don't have a horse in this race, so they're going to tell us what really is going to work, what's going to make sense, and what's not going to make sense. So at one level, this project is going to be focusing on county county facilities. At another level, we're also going to be focusing on, uh, I'll say an aspiration to enable towns, small towns in Jackson County. To experience uh en- energy independence, in an in energy independence, we want them to have the opportunity to own their energy. And to essentially allow their community to benefit through lower rates and uh. Hopefully more more reliable and more effective transmissions, we're talking about a microgrid for a small town that is still connected to the bigger grid, so there's that redundancy that's that's enabled. Uh, again, the small towns, there'll be research in terms of what's your best ownership option? Do you have a private purchase agreement where somebody else is going to going to fund this thing? And then sell the product, the the power back to you, do you want to own it yourself, do you want to establish a utility or not? All of that, uh, the policy implications, the financial implications, the technological aspects of it will be studied by the uh, by the university students and and the faculty.
And these guys are in in the urban planning department, apparently there's a there's a a degree in urban planning now.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, so they would go out and, you know, their hope is that they would be running the city of McOklota someday, or or. Be consultants at the same time, so we're getting the grad students and faculty to to try to do that.
So can they anticipate from uh uh. Our our design, what the what the need would be for the jail?
I think that would be part of it, and not not just the jail, but uh, they'll look at the growth rate for the for the cities like Springbrook, for example, where I'm from. They'd look at, hey, in the next twenty-five years, you you might grow by twenty houses or something like that, they do the same thing from McOklota. And the same thing for if they if they did the the county, uh, the courthouse here. And and that's what they're trained to do, and that would be in that plan.
But I think to your point, Jack, it will require some additional work on their part, and I I would venture that just from the design. They're not going to get an accurate reading of the energy bills, they're going to go benchmark, and I think your ideal area is exactly probably what they're going to end up doing. Um, one thing about these students is they're not going to come in here and work in a vacuum, they're going to work with people in Jackson County. We're going to lead this initiative on a kind of local level, directing them to talk to the right people. We would hope that they'd have an audience with you to understand your concerns, to get your ideas about, you know, how we can be most accurate in doing this research and. And how their recommendations could be most useful and actionable. Um, the idea is that they provide you with a plan that educates you on all the options, and you're you're in a position then to make a more informed decision about energy going forward.
Well, you know, that's kind of what they did up at ECIA, because I served on that board, and they came in and made their presentations, and you know, there was lots of discussion and stuff. But it's it's certainly paid off for them.
That's that's right here.
The city of uh Ashbury has a big solar deal out there to add to their power capabilities, and and I have not talked to them, but I know they've done it. And West Union is doing the same thing, and it's becoming up and. You know, but that would be the nice thing about it, would be that we we could get something down on paper and interest some of these these communities like Bellevue. You know, they still uh power up their own generators sometimes, whenever the the demand gets high, and that might be a real option for them.
I know Beth Bonds, um, the city manager in Asbury, she's been very happy with with the outcomes.
So recently, we've had some conversations about having a backup generator here, this would almost. Eliminate that need too, I mean, I'm studying.
It it would would during the summer times, you wouldn't need a backup, uh, probably during the summertime, but you would need it still during winter. Um, you're not producing like, you know, like you are in the summers, about fifty percent probably your actual kilowatt hour production.
I just wonder if it would keep the lights on when the power is off from the city, meaning which would be a rare situation.
Uh, usually not.
See, that it when you're talking, it's still coming through the this electric provider, but you're providing, yeah, you're you're going back to the electric provider, so it's still that grid.
Yeah, so that's, but there is a way to do that, but it's it's very expensive and it's your your. Yeah, because you you can cut it off just like you can on your house for whatever and put in a backup generator. And then that's all in the wiring, so the solar would still provide it at on that, but that's a more expensive option.
Okay.
When you try to do it that way, and then it's also got. Mine has a deal on it for the fireman, if I went on, uh, as soon as my power goes off to my house, they take the. It shuts off my solar too, so in case I had a fire, the firemen don't have to worry about, uh, hey, this guy's getting solar here, so we might. Might still have power coming in, but it is an option to do it, but it would have been expensive for me to to do that.
Yeah, just curious.
They they look, a lot of these larger communities are looking at something called resiliency centers. Where they have, for example, a derailment where everything's knocked out, they have a large battery in there, they've got a solar feed to it. So for example, if it's a hundred and twenty degrees, people can come in and get get air conditioning, you know, the the uh, you know, the people that are maybe have health issues can be invited in. Um, I know Atlanta's doing a big one of those, Iowa City's looking at doing it as well. There there's technology, the the problem is the batteries are still so darn expensive, and and you know, you're looking at just ten thousand dollar battery for a house. Let alone for a, you know, for a community, but but it's coming, in the next ten years, and I talked.
Two years ago, it would have been twenty thousand, so that it's been dropping.
And batteries are revolutionizing themselves right now, there's a whole new technology moving away from lithium. Toward what's called a flow battery, which is supposedly just so much more, in fact, we had a guy from Fermilab talk to us about it. He says it's ten years out, but it will multiply the effectiveness of these batteries, ten and twenty volt. Um, and that's when they're going to come down, I get a battery for a thousand dollars for my house, and then I'm getting, um, so that's coming.
Well, that's a great backup system, I mean, you can charge it either off solar or off the grid.
Absolutely. Yep.
It's just with with all the technology advances that they're doing, if you bought one today, in two years, it would have been probably half price. And you've got a battery that was made that doesn't have the advances in it, but but it's always something you could do later too, if we. For example, if you guys went with the courthouse here, you know, you could say, we're interested in battery backup or whatever, and they could. Figure that out, it wouldn't be very expensive if you didn't do it right now, but they they would set up the system for it.
So the Clean Energy Plan is kind of the the key output from this process, you would receive one for the county, the small towns would receive uh one as well. Um, we recognize the small towns aren't necessarily going to just jump right on this, make this investment, but we think that by educating them, they can. At least incorporate it into an aspect of their strategic plan, so that when, for example, their next alliance contract comes due. They've got an option, they can show a line, we're looking at this, this is another option for us to consider, well. Maybe we can do better now, because they know they've got some competition, right now it's a monopoly, and these small towns are at their mercy, basically. Uh, and we're especially concerned concerned about the small towns, this would be a study for towns lower than, uh, with populations less than five hundred. Mo- many of these residents are fixed income, lower income people, um. Hearing what Black Hills Energy is doing right now for some of these towns, it's just ripping them up, you know, thirty percent increase in in gas coming up on its profile, so. We don't want that happen in electrical, but it's going to happen, and we want to get out in front of it, educate people on their options, if they're poised to to at least consider some other ways of forward. So the energy plan, second, there we're going to get some marketing materials that will further support our effort to uh, you know, inspire people to to consider more renewable energy options in Jackson County. We're also looking at a legislation kind of education brochure that they're going to develop that will help our legislature uh in. They get the capital, understand what kinds of investments are being made in in renewable energy, how common is ownership? What's the value economically, not economically, because quite honestly, right now, our legislature is not all that supportive about solar. They let the tax credit expire that the state had on, um, that was tied to the federal tax credit that got renewed. So we think it's a matter of just educating the folks about what is happening in the counties, what's happening in the towns, and what the value of this is to our communities, so we'll get that from it as well.
Do you have a ball bat that big?
We're going to use yours.
You know, sometimes they're pretty strong-headed.
I know they are.
We have a hard time convincing them of things, so.
We're hoping university-based research will allow a level of credibility that will cause them to maybe listen.
I think that's really smart.
And also, it, you know, it's not political, but people try to make everything political, but uh. It's just, it's the right thing to do for the environment, but you don't have to be wanting to do the environment, it's the right thing to do for the for the county to keep you guys. With your budget, you know, if you if you could uh say, we're not going to have a electric increase on this building. For the next twenty-five years, the power is paid for already, that frees up a lot of power.
Sure, sure, makes budgeting a little easier too.
And you never know, like, Alliant has a twenty-six percent increase in into the the. Power board, whatever that's called, right now, that's trying to get approved, and. I'm not going to get that.
That's a huge increase.
Yeah, and Black Hills is working on one that uh, they've got over a thirty percent increase that they're looking at for natural gas. You know, and they supply most of the county, and uh, I get mine from Alliant, but but most of the small towns are on blackrock energy.
So we did just renew the stroking contract, it was eighty-nine cents last year, what was it, dollar twenty-six this year?
Yeah, I mean, that's. You're noticing it, yeah.
So now the meat, the last page there is, we're in for ten thousand dollars on this grant, that's our portion. And we've already told them that we were going to do this, and. We were talking to to Nick over here, and and he said that uh, you guys are getting three point seven seven million, this is one of the things that that is. All the way through there, I know you're going into uh, to get uh. Trained on on what what's available for that to reinvest in, or. Whatever the care grants are and stuff, but this would be one of the ways, and you guys are going to get something back out of it, because. It's really focused at at government operations in Jackson County. And then there'll be specific deals, so if we put down as one of the projects for these grad students in the University of Iowa to look at the jail. What are the savings over that, you're going to get a unbiased.
Independence study.
Independent study, yeah, it's not going to be the the guy selling the 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 premium solar to you or whatever it's going to say.
And I think in next year's budget, we did set aside some money for some of those. Um, if the county had those programs, did we not?
You're talking about the IIS?
Yes.
Um, that's how we budgeted for it was five, so you would be.
I was thinking we budgeted for two or three of those at thirty-five hundred dollars each. We'll have to check.
Yeah.
Well, I, first of all, we're grateful you even entertained our request, we're we're committed to doing this, we're committed to the county regardless. Uh, because so much of this is directly, I think, uh, going to lead to. I hope a lot of value on your part, we were hoping you could contribute a little bit. Uh, if if we look at, for example, the Hurstville savings, quarter million dollars over twenty-five years, and that's, that's a, that's money in the bank, basically. You're going to multiply that by an order of three or four times, probably, if we include all the county buildings.
Well, as you continue forward too, like the increase is coming.
Oh, yeah.
It's only going to get worse.
Dollars, yeah, yeah. Now, I will say that that the Hurstville Center was advantaged by the fact that they were on Alliant Energy. And they have by far the most supportive policy uh regarding net metering. You know, with municipal, not quite so much, but you're still going to have a great return, and you're still going to get your energy paid for by your by your solar, so. Uh, but you, we won't promise you, everybody's going to get the same great return as as Hurstville has.
My, I I just think it's invaluable to to see what the difference would be for the jail and other buildings.
You know, and I just think of the care facility too, imagine the amount of what they're going through, they got the perfect south side there. You know.
You got a south exposure roof there?
Well, the land itself.
Oh, I see, plenty of exposure to the south, cool.
This is the Andrew Jackson care.
Oh, yeah.
Between Andrew and Lamont.
I see, I wasn't aware.
Oh, the site where they went and plant all the trees?
Well, they want to cut all the levels down, that's what.
We're also, this would include uh the county parks, you know, I know Subula is just bleeding this with their electrical bills.
Yeah.
We'd love to get a site out there, it's it's pretty heavily wooded, so it's going to be a little tricky, but that'll be part of our study. We'll include uh Spruce Creek, you know, anything that that's county-owned is going to be included in this, and.
Okay, that'll be great, we look forward to the report.
Excellent.
Do we need to approve this?
Well. Paying them?
We probably don't, it's not really on here to approve this.
You were just presenting today, correct?
That's right.
That would be fair.
That was my fault when I called Luann about it, I wanted to touch base with you guys again on the gross solar program. And then this grant came up, and and so we said we're in for ten grand, which would completely break us, we'd have about seventeen thousand.
We have nine thousand something, but uh.
Well, we, we, we're going to fundraise for the rest, but we thought with the with the thing, it would make a lot of sense that you guys would get that plan and do it, and I thought you'd want to be in.
We will certainly give it serious discussion, much appreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
And any other questions, like Mike, you were talking uh. About uh, some people say you can't put it on a flat roof and and whether this this study would would decide what that is.
I know, we we talked about this, and I believe shortly after, maybe I come on board.
I know, we we talked about this and I believe shortly after maybe I come on board, but uh. I know our maintenance guy here was reluctant with. Putting something on the roof, but I think we need to have more information.
The structural integrity is something that 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 would be critical, obviously, but they.
Come off and replace the roof when it's needed and repair and whatnot, so it's gotta be accessible.
Absolutely.
And I talked to two solar installers that that's one of the things for just homeowners. Is they say if we're gonna put it on your roof. It might be a good time to replace your roof if you're getting real close, you know, if you're thinking about doing it in the next five years. Now, the insurance companies, and this is all according to those guys who have a dog in the fight. Insurance companies like it because your shingles don't wear as much with that solar cover. You know, it's also there like this, but uh and so. And my insurance company says, no, there's no difference. To put it on there wasn't any add on or anything like that.
That'd be interesting.
You're welcome.
So we're gonna have a few signs around here.
At this time, we'll recess. Meeting and. And we'll reconvene the meeting and we're being joined by Lynn Boe. Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services to discuss our meeting yesterday. Your meetings.
Yes, meetings. Actually, we did have three meetings yesterday. Jack was attending all three of them as representatives of the region in Jackson County. Uh, we had a children's advisory committee meeting and an adult advisory committee meeting. To begin the afternoon and both of those agendas were very similar. They included a uh presentation, an overview of Christina Gretter's role as children's. Mental health system coordinator. She was there, did a PowerPoint, kind of gave the. Highlights of how she envisions moving forward in that role. And then once again, having her in that role was a real benefit to the community and I would imagine that came through loud and clear with her presentations. Because she's very articulate, very knowledgeable. Um, understands that this region includes five counties. Not just the most populated one, so she will be reaching out. I think she's coming. To meet with me in a couple of weeks, but wanted to come to Jackson County to have that meeting. And so I think that was hopefully informative to everybody. And the other agenda item for both meetings was just an overview of Senate File Six Nineteen. And kind of how the region anticipates that will impact things going forward. And then we went into the region's governing board meeting at three o'clock. And so some of the highlights as I generally uh mentioned out of that meeting is. David Farmer, the region's fiscal agent, had a preliminary fiscal year end report. Of where we stand on the fund balance and again, we remind ourselves that that's a significant figure for us to. Look at through this upcoming fiscal year. Because at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty two, we will have to have our fund balance at forty percent or below. And if we don't, then that will reduce our reimbursements from the state. Once they um certify the funding balances as of February, it's December year. First following June thirty fiscal year end. Currently, the region's fund balance at June thirtieth of this year was approximately five million dollars, which is forty eight percent. So this year, there is no sanction, no consequence to being above the forty percent. But that gives us an idea of what we have to do in terms of expenditures for this current fiscal year. The other factor that plays into. Keeping in mind our fund balance for the end of six thirty of twenty two is we will also receive approximately one point eight million dollars in revenue. During this fiscal year that the region did not realize prior to this. And this is coming about because if you remember the Senate File Six Nineteen um identified it. Per person, per capita cap of the mental health levy to be thirty seven dollars. For every county in every region and our levy was at thirty two. Oh, wait, I should know that. I forget the exact pennies, but. So in between a combination of our county property tax levy. And what the state will begin funding um a portion of that per capita. The levy for the state is thirty seven dollars, which is higher than what our region was able to levy.
Um, so has that levy started?
Yes, that that thirty seven dollar levy started July first.
Twenty one fourteen comes from us, right?
Yes.
And then the remainder comes from the state.
Fifteen eighty six comes from the state. Um, this is the only year of a transition into the new funding. So fiscal year twenty three, that per capita rate will go up to thirty eight dollars, but that will be funded a hundred percent by the state. So basically, File Six Nineteen, Senate File Six Nineteen gave us a year to adjust to change in a funding structure. One year of transition and then after that.
They take away from us.
Pardon me?
They take away from us.
Well, Jack might have a thought on that in terms of the role of the governing board. What gets taken away?
Like the rollback from commercial? Is that part of it?
Uh, this, I believe, well, the the, yeah, that may be a part of, that was a part of the same bill. Um, the funding for this is coming from my understanding from the state sales tax. Is where the source of what that stage is getting. Was my my understanding, just the backfilling. Yeah, that could be of your commercial. But I don't know that they really say that that's where this money is.
You said the balance at the end of June was five about.
About five million.
Okay, and that was forty eight percent. So what's the number for forty percent, you know?
Um, actually, I don't think David gave that to us.
What would our balance need to be?
I had. Divide that by forty eight and multiply it by forty.
I have to see what our expenditures would be for FY twenty two and figure out what forty percent of that would be.
So what is the plan? I guess even with. Going forward for programs or this one point eight million that you didn't expect?
Well, uh, if you remember, there are some services that we have never implemented. But even before I talk a little bit about that, I'll mention that Christina Gretter's position is a new expense to the region. And that was put into the budget at two hundred thousand. Um, now I wanna be very clear about that. That is not indicative of her total salary. It's in addition to salary and payroll expenses, it's other ancillary expenses and mileage. Transportation will be a a big one because we do expect her to trans to. And with her being in that position, there could be also some other expenses that she would identify as programming needs that the region would have to fund. So it's possible that she'll actually come back to the governing board with. Um, some identified needs that will have to, that will require region funding. But in addition to that, what we know out of the gate is there are three kinds of services that the region currently does not have in place. That are considered core services and we are required to have. And they are um for the adult system, crisis stabilization. By community based, which means that somebody's having a crisis and they need somebody to help for two or three days. That service comes to that person in the community. This is the counterpart to crisis stabilization residential service, which is a program that your French currently runs. For the region, that is an actual physical location of uh five beds. Where people are having a crisis, but they need to go someplace to get stabilized. They can stay five to seven days. So we have to do this crisis, we have to contract with some provider who's saying, yes, we will have staff available to do this crisis stabilization in the community for adults. On the children's side. We need to have both types of those crisis stabilization services as well. So we have to have the one. That we still have to identify for the adults, meaning the stabilization program that's available in the community. And we also have to identify a specific location, which would be a crisis stabilization residential service for kids. Those programs are not cheap. Um, it is very prescriptive and Iowa code. What a provider has to have in place in terms of staffing. In order to say that they are capable of providing the service and the staffing, especially for the residential based programs, but also. Pretty much the same for the community based. It requires um diff- several different. Members of a team, of a mental health professional team, including. Um, access to a prescriber, but also then a licensed mental health commission, a care coordinator. Those kinds of things. So there are several staff positions that have to be available to each of those services. So that will be a considerable expense. But the first role will be to identify providers who are even willing to come forth with that service.
Can we have somebody in the area that is qualified to do that?
Um, yes, there are actually, you know, different agencies already in the five counties that are. Would meet the qualifications. The question becomes, is it a service that they are willing to take the risk to set up because ultimately. Those services should become credentialed as Medicaid funded services and so people would access them would. Be billed to Medicaid if they receive the service. It's a big investment. Workforce shortage is a big concern.
I mean, I I see the. You're going way down the line here. Who makes that call? Say, yeah, I need adults. Or to stabilization here at this time. I'm making this call. I'm making the call. Whoever the writers are or children's, if you're in the school system or whatever it might be, who makes that call? So, yeah, I need that. You know, if. Who's trained or are they, you know, you better have people trained that. These are the symptoms and these are the things that are going on, I guess.
Right, so these all fit into what we call in my world a continuum of care of service in the crisis system. And we have a pretty well established continuum of care. And by that, I mean, we have a crisis line that's available twenty four seven. We have mobile crisis outreach. Which, by the way, is continuing to get increased utilization from Jackson County.
Through law enforcement or or to to the hospital or?
Um, I think most recently through the Sheriff's Department, I think, used it several times and specifically maybe to the jail. Um, you know. What's been interesting when that first started, actually, many of the callers were coming from Suffolk Borough, so they somewhere. Had heard about the crisis line. Um, maybe not specific, the mobile crisis outreach service, but they call the crisis line in the course of somebody, you know, screening that call, addressing that call. It was identified that that might be what this person could be helped helped with. Um, so it's becoming a wider variety of uh people making those referrals. But it can come from a person in the community or it can come from any professional, it can come from anyone who knows of that. So that's kind of where the crisis system starts and so then there are varying levels of intervention that are available. Um, crisis, mobile crisis comes out and meets with somebody. They don't need to go to a hospital, but they. Could stand to be away from their home for a few days just to kind of regroup. Rhonda's House into Whit would offer that staff by peers. If they need a little more than that and they need some mental health intervention, but they don't need a hospitalization. Then this crisis stabilization residential bed that I mentioned earlier, that is managed by your French, is located in Davenport. That's another higher level of care. That is that same kind of level of care of these other crisis stabilization programs that I just mentioned. Then after that, if they need something a little more structured, but not quite a hospital, then we have a contract now with. A service called Subacute Services, which are located in Cedar Rapids and Johnson County and Iowa City. And then ultimately a hospitalization if that's how serious the situation is. So there's a whole. Step up approaches to what's available. So all these crisis services that. The three that we don't have and the one we do have for a community based or residential all fit into that structure. So anywhere along that line. Whoever is helping that person in crisis can be, is aware of all these options and can help identify. If these crisis stabilization services are the most appropriate to help that person in crisis. Does that help?
Yeah, I I would guess once, yeah.
So there are very. Yeah.
How the chain works, you know, where out of curiosity, what, you know, the capacity of the the rounded houses, is it?
It's a three bed house.
Is it always full or what's there?
No, it's not always full. Um, we did just get data yesterday. I think they had eight or eleven residents during the month of June. Um, we get data, the governing board gets data every month, um, in a metrics. Um, sheet that tells us what the occupancy is at Xavier French, that residential bed. Um, that isn't as high as we'd like it to be. It's a costly service. We'd like to see it utilized more. I don't remember what it was from yesterday. It's been hovering thirty eight, forty percent. Beds are full throughout a month.
Well, we certainly don't want people there that are, or we don't need them there. We hope they're.
Right, well, that's.
Maybe that's a good. But you said, like you said, it's an expense that we're paying for. Are we getting the value out of it, I guess?
We have used it. Yes, it is.
I mean, you have data that shows, I'm sure, well, how many. Into cases we have from Jackson County.
Yeah.
Down county becoming.
Yeah, yeah. I would say the board gets pretty detailed data to answer. Most of those kinds of questions that people would have and that data is collected. In Collet if I Robert Young Center as a part of that region's crisis contract. Um, so. So in terms of going back to the expenditures for this current fiscal year, those are some fairly costly programs. That we need to get implemented.
But then can we sustain them?
Well, we will have additional revenue going forward for the next three years. And also, most of those programs. With the exception of the peer run Rhonda's House into Whit, most of those other programs, once they get credentialed, are able to be billed to Medicaid. Now, private insurance typically does not pay for crisis stabilization services and settings like that, but. Um, so there is some revenue coming in from being Medicaid billable.
Like this current year, like Lynn said. Twenty one fourteen per capita for the county's taxes and. That equals six million three hundred and forty four thousand one hundred and fifty six dollars. And the state kicks in theirs and that's an additional four million seven hundred and fifty nine, six eighteen. For a total of eleven thousand one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and seventy four dollars, which is actually an increase of one million eight hundred and sixty six. Three forty three in what we have this year. And then fiscal year. Um, twenty three. The state per capita is thirty eight dollars, then it goes to forty and then it goes to forty two.
And the percentage is different or changes also from what the state contributes?
No, it's a hundred percent state funded.
Yes, everything comes from the state.
We will, on our county property tax bill, that mental health property tax line will be removed or yeah, will be zero.
After this year, when, cause we had put in the thirty seventy eight. And then we were told by the legislation that it had to be dropped twenty one dollars and fourteen cents. So the property tax people are. Property owners saw a reduction in their their mental health fund. But then next year it'll be completely gone.
So our taxes for September this year are still at the old rate? No.
There are twenty one fourteen.
The department of revenue reduced those tax rates.
But it didn't require the county to do an amended budget, correct?
Yeah, they just did it.
Yeah. So, um, we also, there was the CARES Act dollars. We returned twenty seven thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars to DHS. Which really was pretty good considering in August, we were told we were getting two point eight, almost two point nine million dollars. So the governing board worked really hard as we've talked before about.
Four rounds?
Yeah.
Yeah, just in a couple of points of interest, you know, we did it, allowed school districts to apply and. Bellevue Community School, their total was seven thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And the McCoke to school system recently received twelve thousand fifty eight dollars and seventies. But, you know, and when you look at the providers of services. Somebody's, I and I don't know what all providers provide services to Jackson County. But Hillcrest received um ninety four thousand five hundred and sixty six dollars and fifty eight cents. And imagine the possibilities, which also provide services in Clinton County and other counties. But they received three hundred and seventy seven thousand seventy two dollars and fifteen cents and there's a whole list. The total amount that was given to providers was one million eight hundred and. The total amount that was given to providers was one million eight hundred and twenty five, four seventy nine, seventy eight. So like Lynn said, between the schools and the providers. There was a, we, we, we had to return twenty seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
And I believe, Jack, if you look at that, I think imagine the possibilities as an agency got the highest amount of money.
They did.
Which just means though that they put the requests in and. More importantly, actually, is once it was approved, they provided all the receipts for whatever got paid out on that sheet that Jack is looking at. Their Lori Eland has packed away receipts for every penny of those payments out to.
And she has to keep them for five years.
Yeah, but I ma- so imagine the possibilities and that money with imagine, as Jack mentioned, they cover a lot of counties. But that money was specific for only counties within our region and they serve Scott, Clinton and Jackson Counties. So that was money specifically into the services that people in our, those three counties benefited.
The next closest was New Choices and that was two hundred and seventy one thousand.
Yeah, so. Um, then there was a lot of time discussed yesterday about another potential expense to the region. In this current fiscal year and that has to do with a program called IPS or Individual placements and supports. It's a vocational program. It's what they call an evidence based practice, means it's an approach to helping individuals with disabilities. Specifically, in this case, for people with mental health related disabilities to um. Benefit from a support and employment program, which will help them identify a job. Um, get a job, have a job coach to keep a job. And this is a program that the state is endorsing. And they are wanting what they're calling to identify three early adopter sites. Meaning three sites that the state has identified that they would work with in implementing this. This strict program, but in order to do that, there's a need for some seed money or startup money. So the Robert Young Center, not to be confused with the relationship that the governing board has with Robert Young in terms of doing crisis services. But this is Robert Young Center as an employment um. Provider, which they do very robustly and on the Illinois side. Made a proposal yesterday to the board. Um, to request the board's endorsement and inclusion in a letter of interest to. Apply to become identified as one of these really adopter sites. And what that means is the region would commit a hundred thousand dollars of seed money if they were selected as one of the three sites in the state.
And then there's only going to be three sites.
Yeah, so, um, there's a lot of discussion about that. For everybody to understand really the benefits of this and how does this. Um, fit into the fact that the region basically had to discontinue funding and sheltered work. And I would say there's a couple of factors that are, it's, it's a. This movement is a movement that is being pushed at the federal level. On the premise that individuals with disabilities have every right to work in a, in a. Integrated employment program. At whatever job they're capable of managing at minimum wage at a minimum and doing away with. Subminimum wage certificates, which is what gave agencies the ability to be able to pay. Um, individuals with disabilities in a sheltered work setting at a wage less than minimum wage, it would be based on the productivity.
Remember, those were discontinued because the federal government said, no more. We won't reimburse the states for sheltered work.
Hmm.
So there was a lot of discussion about how this really differs from what that was.
It really, it really does. And, and this is. This is a movement in the direction that is in the best interest of individuals with disabilities as well. Those individuals that are able to do some kind of work. Um, it engages employers and actually Jim Rowan is. Has been an employer and worked with Imagine the Possibilities, I believe, for a number of years. Having hired a couple of people with disabilities in his program, in his business, so. I would say those are probably the highlights. I don't know if there's anything else, Jack, that you can think of?
No, those things that you talked about, I, I kind of. Highlighted and um. It was a long afternoon.
Yeah, it was a lengthy discussion about the employment.
Yeah, it really was.
I know you said that you, you could put them in a program, but then you have, you also have to hire someone to mentor them.
One of, one of the other things.
Timer all the time.
One of the other things we did to approve a contract was for peer support to have an individual. Go to somebody rather than have that individual come to the peer center. Because some, you know, sometimes you need to go to them. And we did a, 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 a word of contract for uh supported services for somebody to provide services. Um, to the individual in their, in their setting.
Hmm. Uh, you know, I guess one other thing, not a part of the meeting at all yesterday, but if you wonder, are we getting, you know, a bang for our buck with the region's crisis system? This afternoon, there's going to be a training downstairs that um was requested by Andrew Long. And two of the staff from the region's crisis system are coming and meeting with, I think Andrew said there were going to be ten. Participants from jail staff just to talk about um. Policies and how to work with an inmate who might be expressing some suicidal thoughts. Or actually taking some action. So that's an example of a training program. It's out there, it's available to us and. And definitely, you know, the staff will benefit from having that training, so.
Well, I've been begging for it as long as. And finally, finally, our, our, our sheriff's department is getting some. Training and I, Mary Peterson told me at one of our meetings, she says, Jack. And so that's been great.
And there were nineteen people that attended the mental health birthday training on July sixth. Now, that was funded by CARES Act dollars, but there were nineteen people, I think actually five of them went from the jail for that. The sheriff was there, he was in attendance. And then um some agency staff from other places. So, so we're seeing um some response and actually I, I have an email from. National Alliance for the Mental Health Chapter in Davenport and I believe they've been contacted by. The interim city manager to come and do a training um with the city staff on some things because NAMI has a wide variety of trainings available as well.
And one of the things we did discuss yesterday too, um, uh. Maybe not during the work session or the meeting, but you know, what is the role of the governing board now? Since we're not funding the programs in the future. Um, will we need a governing board? Will we need people to be? And it was basically explained just today, yes, we will still because. The governing board will have to present or put together the plan. And then it goes to the Department of Human Services. But there will only be two people um from the department that will, will really be seeing all of the different regions.
So with the new Senate file, the uh department has the ability to. Um. Approve, deny or revise the annual service and budget plan. Which we have to submit to the state every year by April first. And so I think when we see that, then you wonder, well, so where does the governing board fit in all that? Basically to. Uh, give their stamp of approval to some document being submitted to the state, knowing when they hand it over to the state at this point. What happens with it from that point forward is out of the control of the governing board.
Yeah. But yet, when they. Changed the uh adult services and um the children's services, then they made it, they. They increased the size of the governing board by adding those participants as, as voting members of the board. So. You know, and then they go through this and revamp the whole thing. You wonder. What really is, what strength do you have?
So, time will tell.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Hey, thanks. Lynn did a great job yesterday. She, she had to help with the presentation because Lori was. At a Department of Human Services meeting at the same time that we from one to three, so. Her and uh.
Felicia.
Felicia kind of ran the other two meetings.
Yeah. There will be more of that. I think Lori's time will be taken up. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from anybody for the good or the cause?
No, I mentioned, I mentioned, I mentioned earlier, there are some projects, a few projects at the care facility that we're working on and. Working through, there's some repairs up there that are being done and. So.
But, you know, I think that. I'm glad you're keeping track of that. But I, I, some, somehow or other, we have to stimulate to get some of that stuff completed. And it just seems like, you know, we talk and we talk and we talk about the concrete, we talk about this, we talk about that.
Bracing in the building and.
And I don't know if we need to. You know, I don't know if we need to communicate with them that we are. Going to allow them to do a couple of rooms at a time. Um, to refurbish them, so.
I think we need a list.
Yeah.
I think we're lacking in that and it's easy to forget stuff if we don't have it.
Right.
Written down and prioritized. I mean, I did visit with Marty this morning, but I think we need to come up with. The important stuff.
I think we do need that board.
I think we, I think we really need.
And it's nice to be able to cross some of those things off. And then, um. I think, you know, as we, as we. Begin to process this whole cares funding stuff. I think that, you know, we need to have a department head meeting to discuss with the elected officials and. And um, the department heads, what might be on their list of, of concerns or needs?
So if we take that picture. Put up where that plaque is, move that picture over. That plaque somewhere over here, then we have no space right there for our board.
For your. Yeah.
Okay, unless you got a better place to put it.
I, I think we'll come up with some. I think we need to really sit down and. I think Mike is the contact person for the care facility and get with Marty and.
Well, I'm kind of the go between, let's, let's have and that kind of proposes stuff and. Ask for stuff and I get with Marty and.
Maybe you just need to sit in your chairs and I can kind of write down some thoughts on paper and.
Yeah, I'm gonna get um with Matt and maybe he could come up with a step of this too, but.
I, I guess I'm really excited about having the solar people do that study for our different buildings.
I think it would be pretty valuable, yeah.
Because I know that, you know, I've had. At least six or seven people, when they talk about the jail, they said, well, have you talked about? Um. Either solar or what's the other um geothermal? Have you talked about doing those for heating and cooling at your new facility? And I said, I know we discussed it early on. About looking into the potential of that, but I said, we haven't really discussed it a great deal since, but. I think if the university students come into a study, I think that'd be great to give us the facts and figures.
It would almost have to be in the planning. Part, part of the planning mode, if you're gonna. You know, where it'd be situated now or what, where.
So there will be a generator down there, right?
I would say, yeah.
I think they have to have one.
Well, I'm just curious what the cost of that would be and would it be? As cost effective to put a battery system instead of the generator? Just to look at that.
I don't know.
And that's maybe a better question for Dover as far as with the jail.
Yeah.
Iowa laws requiring us to do.
A certain backup system.
Yeah, so. Well, if there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? So second. And move the second into adjourn, all those in favor.
Alright.
I motion carry. The meeting is adjourned.